Hello, everyone. I'd like to call our Board of Commissioner regular meeting to order at 7:03 PM on August 8th, 2025. Is it the 7th? I know, I can't do this without my regular agenda.
Without what?
This one doesn't have a date on it. Let's start over. Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here in person and online. We're going to open our regular Board of Commissioner meeting, August 7th, 2025, at 7:04 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
Present.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Present.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge. Dear Lord, thank you so much for us being able to gather and make decisions for our community. We ask that you just guide us through this. We pray for all in our community who are sick and, you know, just in traveling and all the schoolchildren who've gone back to school this week. Just keep them all safe and we just pray that you keep them in your care. And just help us tonight to make decisions that will be best for our community and we just appreciate each and every person in our community and ask prayers and blessings over them. Christ's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. Thank you, everyone, for being here and we appreciate all of our staff and I was going to say our police who are keeping us safe tonight, but I don't see an officer here. So everybody be cool tonight and just, you know, if you speak, just please be respectful and kind and just, you know, we just want to have a great meeting. And everyone, please speak into your mics clearly so everyone at home can hear. Item number five is approval of the agenda.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number five passes 5-0. Item number six is citizens' comments.
We have two tonight, Mayor. The first is Mr. Wyatt Jones.
Thank you. If you just state your name and address and if you live in the city or county.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Wyatt Jones. I live at 7207 Cox Pike and I'm in the city limits. I'm here today because I wanted to get you guys to rethink passing the ordinance for the 20 acres or more burning ban or you can't burn if you don't have the 20 acres. I've lived in Fairview my entire life. Daddy has nine acres over on Lake Road and we have about 120 trees on the property. We counted this weekend and in the last 12 months, we have lost four of our trees. Every time a tree falls, we push it up in a pile based off the current codes. We get our burn permit and we burn. And if this passes, we're not going to be able to do that as we have because instead of burning every time a tree falls, we let our pile get fairly large in size. We do come and get our permits. We have the fire department come out, inspect everything. Like I said, we do it within the parameters that the city has set forth currently and with this, it will cut us out from being able to do that. There are more people besides us that are going to have to deal with this issue because, you know, we do not have the 20 acres. There are multiple people that don't. I just ask that you guys rethink that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Leslie Street.
Leslie Street, I'm at 1062 Highway 96 North. I have a request. I want to request the developers, T-Square Engineering, and everyone else involved in the developments in Fairview to come to City Hall and answer questions from the concerned citizens of Fairview and explain how they are going to correct the issues already caused by their developments and to the surrounding properties. I also would like for someone to explain how the city is making sure these developments are being policed so the property of the citizens of Fairview is being protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards, and recognition. Mr. Ross?
Good evening, Mayor, Board. Just want to go over a couple of things on the public information side. If you have been paying attention to our social media page on Facebook, Facebook has launched a new policy on live video footage where Facebook removes live footage after it's been posted for 30 days. And it's their new policy. We have zero control over it, but our videos are also updated and uploaded to YouTube. So if anyone wants to review a past meeting, they can go on YouTube, on our YouTube channel, and review that. Also, the first Saturday of every month, Williamson County Emergency Management has a, does a tornado siren testing and they did it this past Saturday and then their vendor did another test on Monday. So we did not have a tornado, but I was just letting everyone know if they heard a tornado siren on Monday, they're running a additional test to make sure everything was okay. The next thing, just go over a couple of events. First, I want to thank everyone for coming out to the July 3 event. Haven't seen any of you guys since that event. I've already locked in Rubik's Group for this year or this upcoming year's event along with three sponsors, three of our main sponsors. And then the back-to-school backpack drive was a huge success. So thank you for everyone that participated in that and that came out for that as well and staff for both events. The next thing that we have coming up is Nature Fest, which is on September 20th from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM and is going to be at Bowie Nature Park. And we just added a new event today. It is the Fall Fun Day and it's going to be on October 11th from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM. And we will have a touch of truck. We'll have hayrides, pumpkin carving, face painting, food trucks. It's just a new event that we've created and we posted that today. On September 4th, from 2:00 PM until 5:00 PM, we're going to be having another blood drive here and I'll lay that information at your seat as well. Then one last thing, I did a numbers count for our social media page and in the last 60 days, we've had 290,000 views on our social media page, which is up 54%. So we're getting information out there and people are tuning in. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Mr. Ross?
Mayor?
Yes.
Where are the locations for the sirens?
The one location that they were doing testing at was over near the ballpark on Highway 96 and it's right there off of the side. You can kind of see it from the roadway.
Do you know where the other ones are?
I don't recall any other ones. Fire chief, do you know? That's correct. There is one out towards the rec center.
Okay, thank you.
Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A is planning department report. Mr. Greer?
Good evening. Our quarterly report, so for our permits issued, we're still in implementation of switching systems. So it was challenging to pull the numbers. So I pulled a number from January through June. We issued 90 single-family home permits, 152 townhome permits, zero multifamily permits. Between April and June, we reviewed 21 applications for planning matters. That would go before the Planning Commission. For department improvements, we have launched our new software permitting and application software, GovWell. Training, Devin Halliburton received his property maintenance and housing inspector certification from ICC. He also completed the Level 1 EPSC Inspector, put on by TN EPSC. And I also completed the Level 1 EPSC Inspector. Upcoming items, TPUDC will be presenting the public draft of the new development code on August 13th, which is next Wednesday at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. After the presentation is made, the public draft will be released. Members of the public will be able to download the PDF from the city of Fairview website. We have scheduled a 30-day public comment window. To submit a comment to our office, please mail your comment to City Hall, email myself, egreer@fairview-tn.org, or come to the Planning and Codes Department at 7111 Bowie Lake Road. And if you're using an electronic agenda, my report is in there and I've included in my report the updated list of unbuilt, unbuilt but vested right projects within the city of Fairview. Right now, we stand at 2,528 unbuilt units. Total, we have 371 unbuilt apartments, 806 unbuilt townhomes, and 1,351 unbuilt single-family homes. And just so y'all are aware, the largest project that most people have focused on is the Bellhaven Project. Bellhaven is located Highway 96, Northwest Highway. They have submitted their Phase 1 construction plans to our office for review. So just wanted to make sure everybody is aware that it's likely going to get busier along Northwest Highway than it was here in probably the next six months or so.
Any questions from the board of Mr. Greer? Item 8B, Parks Department Report. Would that be Ms. Bree? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. We've had a great summer at Bowie Nature Park, had a lot of camps, lots of programs. All right. We don't currently have a visitor count because our counter broke once again. We are looking into a brand-new system that doesn't have a hose or a wire on it. So currently, people drive over the wire and it counts their tires. There's some sort of formula that will calculate how many visitors we have and we're looking into a system that operates a little bit differently. No count this month. For park news, our Bowie Storybook Trail is still underway. We're going to do some trail work on the trail to make it a little more accessible for everybody. We have roots growing up and we're going to try to mitigate a water problem. On August 9th, the Friends of Bowie are going to help us with trail work. We've created an agreement with the city that allows them to help us with different park projects. Want to thank our sponsors, First Bank of Fairview, the Friends of Bowie Nature Park, and the Fairview Publix for donating and assisting with the creation of our Storybook Trail. And then also thank you to our Parks Maintenance Team for installing the actual storybook frames and signs. I have these signs in my office currently, so hopefully we can get those up and the Storybook Trail open pretty soon. Congratulations to our Parks Naturalist, Xena Wileman. She's earned her Tennessee Naturalist certification after 40 hours of coursework at Cummins Falls State Park as well as 40 hours of volunteering. So she's put in a lot of hard work this past year. We have updated our homeschool volunteer and field trip/outrage guides. So just making more of those type of programs available for the next year. Those are available online or at Bowie Nature Center and our homeschool registration, after a week of being open, is already waitlisted. We have a couple more spots in our very last homeschool program aimed at kids ages 10 and up, but the rest are waitlisted and those waitlists are getting quite lengthy. Picket orders are still available. They are $50 per picket. Order forms are available online or at Bowie Nature Center and you can either submit them to Keith Paisley or bring them by the Nature Center with payment. My favorite, Camp Bowie. Had a great year. We had 69 registered across four different camps. Some of those campers were double-registered. They joined us for both of their age groups this year. So 58 campers total. We increased our acceptance from 15 campers to 20 campers per camp. We awarded 13 Camp Bowie scholarships, which were created by the Friends of Bowie Nature Park. And our first youngest camp, ages 6 to 8, we had 20, so full camp. Wilderness Wanderers also had 20. Our two youngest age groups filled up the quickest. Our Eco Explorers, we had nine registered, and Star Seekers, we had another full camp. So three full camps this year, guys. It's awesome. And I wanted to thank everybody that was a part of our camps this year. The Bernard Cypher Astronomical Society, the Fairview Fire Department for coming out and helping us with our Aqua Day, the Friends of Bowie Nature Park, creating those scholarships and allowing more kids to join our camp. And then we had a lot of volunteers this year. Cece Watkins had 160 volunteer hours. She was here with us every single day of camp throughout all four camps. Eileen Brogan was a huge help and Pageant led geocaching for our two youngest groups. John Pisner is a plant pathologist and took us on a botany hike. Gina Childress and Jenna Russell was kind of our camp leaders as far as camp counselors go. They all did a great job. They made Camp Bowie so special and it was just awesome to have them be a part this year. And these are some things that we do at camp. So lots going on, complete with pictures. Insect netting, archery, plant ID, fishing. Again, BSAS came out and led an astronomy program. We do survival workshops, pond studies, games. Every year, we tie-dye our shirts. And then every last day of camp, we have Aqua Day and that's where Fairview Fire Department comes in and sprays everybody with a hose. It's a highlight. And then that was our camp brochure for this year. The pictures taken were from our very first year back at camps. So it's really special to see how much we've grown just within the last year. And we do not only do summer camps and homeschool. We do field trips. We have partnerships. We go places to do outreach programs. You know, we have sponsorship and volunteer opportunities. So there are way more ways to get involved with the park system than just coming out for a daily program or having your school come to us for a field trip. So I would love to see more people in this town get involved because we have so many different opportunities. And then on the right is the Fairview Park System Newsletter for August. If you want to subscribe, just email me at bbayley@fairview-tn.org with your name and I will put you on that subscription list. All right, and just wanted to thank everybody for their support. For Fairview Park System News, volunteer opportunities, and upcoming programs or events, please check out our Bowie Nature Park website, our Facebook page, the Fairview Park System Newsletter. Again, that's my email if you need it. The Lob-Lolly Times Newsletter subscription, which is actually run by the founder of the Friends of Bowie Nature Park. Their website as well and their Facebook. And flyers around Fairview, also taken around by a friend of Bowie Nature Park. And I believe that's all.
Oh, my goodness. I can't even tell you how exciting, you know, during COVID, it just went to, you know, basically nobody being able to have camp and, you know, come together. And what y'all have done since then is just absolutely amazing. The participation, the volunteers, and everything that you and Xena, Keith, all the, you know, all the team have done. I just, I'm so excited to see Bowie Nature Park being able to be, you know, a teaching opportunity for these children.
Thank you so much. We've come a long way.
Absolutely.
Mayor, I have a question, please. Bree, what in the world is the Creek Stomp?
So the Creek Stomp is where we lead a group out to Turnbull Creek and they actually get in the creek and use little fishing nets to see what all they can catch. We've caught crawdads, salamanders, little tiny fish, just kind of exploring the ecosystem along a creek.
Okay, great to know. Thank you.
Any other questions, Bree, from the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Everything's really going great out there. Item number 8C, economic development report. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Ms. Carol is at a work-related conference tonight and apologizes for not being able to be here, but says, any questions on this, feel free to reach out to her. We did a little revamping. We came up with four objectives and tried to put what activities she's involved in with these objectives. So I'll just run through the objectives and highlight a few of the activities. First objective, network and form relationships with organizations, businesses, and government agencies to promote leveraging resources and coordinating efforts. A lot of these places that she goes, you know, you go in looking for something specific. Sometimes you're just trying to make connections if an opportunity comes along down the road. But government and regional collaboration activities, there's several items. Two of them were highlighted. She went and met with Senator Marsha Blackburn, which that led to a healthcare provider wanting to discuss a community needs assessment for future expansion in Fairview. Also, at the GNRC meeting, I believe in June, she learned about the interchange lighting program and that got her talking to TDOT about that program. Other organizational and business networking activities, she does around-town coffee every month. Also, on the back of the report, there's a letter from Ms. Stephanie Tillman with the TMA Group who had a very, who got a connection from one of the around-town coffees that I wanted to put in here, just saying that she was able to network and find somebody that was very beneficial with her organization. Several of these other networking activities, she's going to have to fill you in on because I've not been to, I don't think, I've definitely not been to the women in business luncheon. But anyway, very, very, just networking and getting face of Fairview out there. Second objective, attract new businesses to the city while also supporting the growth and retention of existing businesses. Market and promote economic development through social media, website, and events. New business activities, met with one healthcare provider interested in establishing a facility in Fairview. Agazed with one manufacturer exploring relocation in Fairview and held discussions with one business owner planning to open a new operation in Fairview. The existing business activities were around-town coffee. Uncle Lenny's, Regent Homes, and Games Ago out of Nashville were involved in that. We also started looking, we've been talking with Commissioner Roberts about a volunteer program initiative. We began brainstorm sessions. We were at the very beginning of this. Also, I've talked with several different folks about donation program initiative, giving businesses, even individuals, maybe the opportunity to donate to projects or programs that are near and dear to their heart. And we just, we haven't really explored this avenue, but that's one other thing we're looking at as far as with existing businesses that they may be, may want to, may be interested in. The next objective is support and promote economic growth projects that enhance the city's economic competitiveness and improve the quality of life of residents. Seek funding opportunities for economic development projects and activities. Growth project activities, attending the GNRC meeting to explore project and grant opportunities. This is the city's biggest opportunity for funding. If we do go through a grant through GNRC, they walk through the whole process. They help us with the, all the grant writing, all the applications, all that. And there's also a lot of opportunities in transportation at these meetings. Also attended TDOT meetings regarding interstate lighting program. Also attended a TDOT Regional 3. As everybody knows, we're going to have a lot of infrastructure needs that our budget is, will probably never be stretched far enough to meet. So we're going to be looking at a lot of different opportunities to fund these projects and these needs. Last objective, identify economic development challenges and opportunities. Collect, analyze, and report economic data related to city performance and develop a community-wide economic plan. We have begun working on a comprehensive economic plan. We are going to use the CEDS outline and it does include a SWOT analysis and we're in the beginning stages of that. And we also analyze quarterly and end of the year building permit, property tax, and sales tax revenue relevant to prior-year data. And I'm going to go to that in just a minute, but we're also looking at other data that's going to be pertinent, maybe. And a lot of this data is better looked at year-over-year instead of quarter-over-quarter because you may have a lot of activity one quarter and then it slows down and then. So it's really, and in property tax especially, you have a really high bill curve and down. But I think if you look at things year-over-year, it really gives you a clearer picture in some instances. But I want to touch on this. She did complete the first class of the TECD Certification Program on professional development during the last quarter. I'm going to skip over this year, this quarter, fourth quarter fiscal year '25, fourth quarter fiscal year '24 comparison. And I'm going to jump to the next page, which is fiscal year '25, year-end comparison to fiscal year '24, which, as you see, our building permit revenue is up 56% from the prior year. So we're in new areas as far as building, but our property tax, which is a very good indicator of our growth rate, is still around 4% to 5%. So, you know, that tells we're growing, but based on our building permit revenue, we're poised to take a good jump. Our sales tax revenue also kind of lagged at 3%. Our sales tax revenue also kind of lagged at 3% over the fiscal year '24, but a lot of that, you know, can be, you know, attributed to, to the political environment, the, the Biden-Trump election and things like that, so I think it's a very positive look at our, our economy, but I think the building permit revenue really tells us there's gonna be growth in these other two areas, in property tax and sales tax. We're, like I said, we're gonna be trying up, trying to come up with other data, like we're looking at ways to use the business license use. We've also got, Ms. Carol's working on a newsletter, she's got it pretty well finished, but it shows new businesses that are coming to town. I didn't feel like it was relevant to put in this report, but there's, there's a lot of different ways that we can, we can reach out to the community and reach out to businesses and, and build unity and build community, and really looking forward to, to moving in that direction even more so. Any questions that I may be able to answer? If not, just, just, just reach out to Ms. Carol.
I have questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Darty, for giving this report. I'm glad that you are so closely involved and you are able to speak about these things. I would have liked Ms. Carol to be here, and we didn't know that she wasn't going to be here, based on the last conversation we had, I thought that she would give the report for her department, or her, her job at least. Which conference is she attending?
She told me, but I cannot remember the name of it.
Do you know where it is?
I believe it's in Nashville.
Conference in Nashville, okay. I would like for her to be able to come and speak to this at a board meeting soon, because I've got a lot of questions I'd like to speak with her about, about the way that she does the job and things that we could go back and forth on. So, could she come to the next meeting?
Sure, and, and she said, feel free to reach out with any, anything. This has been on the, on the books, and I think with this rescheduling some of the meetings, I, I believe it just is one of those, one of those things, it was, and I, she has no problem reaching, coming, and she can come, answer any questions you have, or if you wanna reach out individually, that's fine, too.
Yes, and we do have individual meetings, and like you said, we've been doing some work, but I think that coming to the meetings and speaking openly at the meetings would be really appreciated. So, I mean, this, this probably could have been pushed back to next time when she could have come, but if, if she could come to, like, the next meeting, not, not till the next quarterly report, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. But I've got another question for you. On the FY '25, the year-end, year-over-year, I'm just curious, when we're looking at sales tax analysis, do we know, like, we're thinking about sales taxes coming in to feed our revenue, and that's really helpful, it helps keep other taxes down, so if we're buying local, then we're paying into sales tax, which comes back into our budget. Do we know, like, which businesses would feed that sales tax back in? So, if I'm thinking, like, gas stations, is it the same if I buy my gas at Mapco, or I don't know, what's it now, Circle K, versus the pilot out by the interstate? Does it make a difference?
I don't believe it does in, in Fairview. We also, we have two types of sales tax. We have a local option, which is what's rung up in the city of Fairview, and then we have state shared, which is, which is a per capita, kind of based on what it's called, state share tax, sales tax, that it comes in based on the revenue brought in from the whole state, and they distribute it per capita based on population, and it's based on census.
Okay, but we can, so we can more likely directly affect the local option sales tax by shopping local, so if we do our grocery shopping, do that here in Fairview, not on the way home in another town, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to mention that to everybody, and I've been meaning to mention it for a couple of meetings, and I keep forgetting, and since you brought this up, I thought this is a good opportunity to let everybody know, one way to help put the money back into Fairview is to shop locally, so going to the dry cleaners here, buying your gas here in Fairview, eating at restaurants here in Fairview, the small businesses that are here, they pay local tax, so shopping local is the way that we can all help each other and help give us tax dollars back to help do some of the projects and the different infrastructure needs that we all desire.
Correct, and we're also very appreciative of out-of-towners that come in and shop in Fairview as well, so we, we've got a lot of good neighbors and neighboring communities that tell me every day they love some of our businesses, so I'm, I'm appreciative of them as well.
I am, too. I was actually out running at the perimeter trail one day, and I struck up a conversation with a guy, because I had to stop and walk, and it was a little hot out, and he was from Spring Hill, and he came here for Bowie Park, but he was shopping here, and so I thought that was great. I just have one more quick comment. I, I know that I have had meetings with you, I have, I was vocal in a previous meeting about wanting economic development reports, I'm really glad to see the objectives laid out with some, some clear points, and to also see the professional development listed that's been done. To see some of these numbers is very helpful. I will be interested in hearing a, a little bit more detail about perhaps some of the things that are happening, and, and that's why if Ms. Carol were here, we could have, like, a little bit of a back-and-forth, but for instance, where she is this evening, a report about that and how that's feeding back, I think if there's a dialogue with the board altogether, and Ms. Carol, we could probably start driving a little bit more, but this is, this is moving more in the direction, so I appreciate it, and I just hope that we can get a chance to talk with her as a board soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions about economic development from the board? There's something that we did in the past that, we have a lot of new people, dark community, and one thing we did in the past is we would highlight businesses in our community, because I know that not everyone knows everything and all about the different businesses that we have to offer, and bouncing off of what Commissioner Roberts said, shopping local, which is so important to our economy and bringing money into our community. In the past, what we did is we had a highlight of three businesses, they would sign up, you may remember this, Tom, they would sign up, and they would come in, and they would give us a little overview about who they are and what they do, so that the new people, and, you know, some people may not, from, you know, have lived here for a while, may not know all the new businesses that are in our community, so I would, that, that's something that I think might be a good thing to bring back, is just, you know, highlighting three businesses, having the businesses sign up, and, and having the, you know, the staff or owners come in and give us a little bit of information about who they are and what they do, so that we can make sure that the community is utilizing everything here in our city. And that might be something that Ms. Carol could look at.
For what it's worth, I think that's a really great idea, also. I think it would be great to say what we've got around here, and if it's businesses, nonprofits, anything, yeah.
All right, 8D City Manager Report, Mr. Darty.
Thank you. We just wanted to remind a, a couple of things. Strategic Planning Session is scheduled for Saturday, August 16th. I thought it was gonna be 9:02, but I got the agenda from Mr. Marshall, them tasking is from 8:00 to 15:00. We will have lunch provided for the folks involved in the, in the planning session. Also, I want to tell you, round-town coffee is at 8:30 at City Hall on Wednesday, the 13th, and that is all that's coming up shortly. We do have, it seems like the, the budget cycle just, just keeps going. I've really, I've really enjoyed entering into the last phases of training with our finance director, Ben Knox, and last year, he took over handling the front end of all that, I, I always do things, but he's doing, first time to, to, totally by himself, do the bank reconciliations, and if anybody wants to have fun, puzzle time, feel free to come by, and I will show you some of that. But I think we've scheduled the auditors to be out the first week, there are, I think, three days of the last week of August, and, and the potential to come out three to four days the next week if they need it in September, so we'll be, we're gearing up for all that as well, so, thank you so much.
Any questions from the board of Mr. Darty? Thank you. Before we start the consent agenda, I want to ask a question of our city attorney. If there's a part, normally, when we do the consent agenda, it's done as one whole. Is there a part, if there's a part of this that I would like to take out, to take a look at individually, how does that work?
There'll be a first, a first and a second, and then discussion, so then you can make a motion to remove it, like any other item, when you move to amend it.
Okay.
Before you, before you call the entire item.
Okay.
And actually, I think, if any, I don't even think you need to vote on it, I think you could, any one of you could pull anything off consent without even a motion and a second and voting on it, I, I think all of you are entitled to, to pull a motion off consent, if you, or pull an item off consent if you don't want to, so I think when you call the item, Mayor, for the consent agenda, you can announce what item you'd like to remove, and if anyone else wants to remove an item, I think they can, too. It's not a consent agenda if someone doesn't, if not all of you are in agreement, so.
So, would we, would everything else stay on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, and then when?
Then you would pass the, that consent agenda, so I think if you have an item and you want to pull off, you would just announce it, and you would...
Would it go under number 10, Old Business?
If it's Old Business, yes.
Well, yeah.
I assume it is.
The consent, we've already voted on this one, so.
Yep, so I assume it is.
It would be under Old Business.
Yep.
Item number nine, Consent Agenda. A is minutes from July 17, 2025, BOC Regular Meeting. Item number B is ordinance 2025-10, second final reading, ordinance 2025-10, and ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, adopting the 2024 additions of the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, International Energy Conservation Code, with local amendments, and providing for related matters. Item C, ordinance 2025-11, second and final reading, ordinance 2025-11, and ordinance relating open burn, regulating open burning within the municipal limits of Fairview, Tennessee. Item number D, ordinance 2025-12, second and final reading, ordinance 2025-12, and ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, to require Knox Box key access systems for certain occupancy groups to ensure emergency responder access. Item number E, ordinance 2025-13, second and final reading, ordinance 2025-13, and ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, to amend ordinance 2019-21 and section 7-201, 7-202, and 7-203 of the Fairview Municipal Code to adopt the 2024 addition of the International Fire Code, including all appendices, and to establish additional fire protection requirements for certain occupancies. Item number F, Resolution 42-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute an extension to the inter-local agreement between Williamson County, Tennessee, and the city of Fairview, Tennessee, for provision of periodic roadwork and maintenance to municipal roads.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mayor, this would be the point, that if you want to pull an item off of consent, this would be where you would do it.
Yes, sir. I would like to amend the motion to remove item C, ordinance 2025-11, and place it on 10, Old Business A, so that we may discuss and vote on it individually.
Okay, and do the first and the second for the main motion still stand? Roberts? You don't have an objection with removing it, do you?
I don't have an objection with removing it.
Who was the second?
I have no objection.
Okay, so it's the consent agenda minus item C, which is the open burn, which the mayor's moved to Old Business, just so we're all clear on what you're voting for, and then as a point of order in the future, probably the, the most correct place to amend the agenda would, would have been when we approved the agenda, but I think probably, if not for the citizens' comment, you may not have wanted to take it off of the consent agenda, I don't know, and the citizens' comments come after the approval of the agenda, we might want to consider in the future putting citizens' comments before we approve the agenda, because that, I think, might be a reason why, it might affect your thinking about whether something, whether you want to amend the consent agenda or not, so Rachel, I think we, we, in the future, we put the citizens' comments before the approval of the agenda, just switch those to the order. And that way, you can take the citizens' comments into account when you decide on whether you want to approve the consent agenda without discussion.
That is exactly why I wanted to remove it from the consent agenda for us to vote on all at one time, because I would like to, for us to discuss and address the citizens' comment.
Perfect. So, we're now, we're voting on the consent agenda minus item C, which has been moved to Old Business.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item 9, Consent Agenda passes, 5-0.
Item number 10, Old Business, 10A, ordinance 2025-11, second and final reading of this ordinance, and ordinance regulating open burning within the municipal limits of Fairview, Tennessee. I have heard from citizens, and I've heard from our fire chief and our fire marshal, and I've heard from developers. Yes.
Motion to approve.
So, Mr. Carter, does this fail for lack of motion?
There, there was a first, is someone gonna second it for discussion purposes? And if not, then it would fail for lack of a second.
Okay, so, item, Old Business A fails for lack of a second motion. Item 11, new business, 11A, Resolution 39-25. A resolution of the City of Fairview, Board of Commissioners, to accept the design for welcome signage and granting authorization for the city to, to move forward with this project. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. Ethan Greer and myself have been working with Annika Gilliam with Kimley Horn on new signs, which I think everybody has been requesting an upgrade. She has brought two options that they have designed. The goal tonight is, is to move forward and, and get new signs for the city. We, we plan to put one on the east side, one on the west side, and one on the 96, well, where our current signs are now. So without, like I said, the goal tonight is, is tell us if, if this is what you want and let us move forward and we'll get these, get this, get this project done. So I think Ms. Gilliam has a presentation prepared for you. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Keith, if you want to go to the second slide.
If you would, for the record, just state your name and address.
Absolutely, absolutely. So my name is Annika Gilliam. I'm a landscape architect with Kimley Horn. I live out in Hermitage. I'm at 104 West Catalina Court. But I'm happy to be here with you all today. So like Tom said, we've been working with him and Ethan over the last few months to come up with some ideas for a new vision for the sign, welcoming everyone to your community. And we've gone back and forth, and these are the two options we've come up with. So you'll see on the screen, Concept A and Concept B. Now, these would be replacing all three signs, so we'd have the same sign in all three locations. And I can talk a little bit about each sign. So we've kept with the welcome to Fairview, and we have added established 1959 at the base, and we have also added the city seal at the base. This base is made of a Tennessee limestone to keep it local feeling. And then the first sign, Concept A, is pretty straightforward. It's just an aluminum-backed sign, and it's got, those letters would be stainless steel, and they would be lit with LED lights, so all the letters would show up at night. Second, Concept B, those would be cedar wood beams, and then that is black metal background, but those letters would also be stainless steel. And there's an option to do uplighting, or we could do built-in LED lights for both sign options. So similar, but some small differences. The Concept A is the most economical of the two options. But I think the goal is to not only create a new vision for the entry signage, but also potentially use this as standardization for future signage around the city. So that's what we have to present to you today, and we're hoping, I'm open to discussion, or if you guys have any questions about the sign, either sign. And Keith, in the next slide, I can show you some lighting options. So Concept A, that's showing the built-in LED for the stainless steel lights. And then Concept B is showing uplights. But like I said, we can change that to be integrated LED lights as well. I know there's always issues with mowers and weed whackers, you know, when spotlights are sitting in the ground, they're more susceptible to being damaged. LED lights usually last about 10 years, so it's a pretty economical option for lighting. And then Keith, if you want to go to the last slide, this is an option for the signage out on Highway 96. I understand that there will be a temporary fire station out there, and this could act as a signage, not only for the city, but also for the station location. So we've worked with the fabricator to come up with a way that we could build that into the sign temporarily. And then when the station moves to its permanent location, that piece could actually be removed and would reveal the established 1959 piece at the bottom. That's all I have for you today. Let me know if you have any questions.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Two.
I'm sorry, motion to pass the, where were we?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Don.
Please, thank you.
I'm in Commissioner Buffalini.
Second.
Okay, I'll start. There is a third, Concept C, that I would like to see tonight before our board. And our planning department came up with it, and it's my very favorite. So are we able to present that as well?
For the sake of conversation, while he's getting that pulled up, thank you for putting these together. I had to pick between these two. Concept B I really, really like. I think it grabs the essence of the community with the different materials that are included in there, just has a really nice look to it.
I feel like it has a nice look now, but wood tends to fade and not look very nice.
Would it, would it be material-wise, would there, would it, would it be real wood, or would it be something that just appeared to be?
Yes, it would be cedar. And there's a couple of different options of what you can do with cedar. You can stain cedar, and it can be, you know, a stain of whatever color you like, and it kind of preserves that color. It does have to be reapplied every few years, or you can leave it as its natural state, and it sort of patinas over time, so it gets a little more gray over time. So whatever look you all were wanting, that's options for that, that type of wood.
And you may have mentioned this, I was reading through the, following along on my iPad here, might have missed it, but is there, as far as cost discrepancy between the two, is there any idea on what that would be?
Yeah, I can run through some numbers with the, just really high level. So like I said, Concept A is the most economical option.
There's option C.
Go ahead.
So the Concept A, yeah, there we go, is, we talked with the sign fabricator, and we kind of got their feedback, high level of what they think it would take to demo the current signs, fabricate the new signs, and install. So for Concept A, we're looking at about $45,000 to $55,000 per sign. So that would come out to be somewhere between $135,000 and $165,000 for all three signs. Concept B, because of the wood, it comes out to be about $55,000 to $65,000 per sign. In total, somewhere between $165,000 to $195,000 for all three signs.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Darty, is the money for the signs coming out of our bond?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is money that needs to be spent and, by next year? And that's where the mon, I just wanted to make it clear where the money's coming from for the signage.
You are correct.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Dart, did we pay to have this design made? And if so, how much?
I had to look at the contract, but yes, we've been under contract with Kimley Horn. They've also been working on our design at Historical Village. I believe a little bit of it was to, to match with some of the things that go on at History Village as we come through, as, as people enter our town, or our city. I'll have to get that number to you, sir.
Ballpark, what do you, what do you?
I think for everything involved, somewhere between $15,000, $20,000.
For the signage?
I believe so.
And how, how much did we budget? Can you remind me, in our budget, yearly budget, for the three signs? Was it $290?
In my plan, I've got $225 on the, on the budget. There's $290.
$290.
Mayor?
Yes.
And that latest breakdown of the bond money that you had provided, the cost for the sign implementation, it was already calculated into that? Okay. Because I'm pretty sure that's all gone, so I just wanted to make sure that that was spoken to.
Yes, yes, that, that included tearing down the old ones, putting the new ones in, installation, everything.
I just didn't want you to get the impression that there was, that was going further into that. Because I think the last time we talked about it, it was basically zero, right? Or close to it? We were going into the interest that we had accrued on that bond money already?
I, I'm misunderstanding. Can you repeat that?
The bond money that has to be spent by December, that's all accounted for at this point, for the most part, correct?
Everything is spent on paper, yes, sir.
Mr. Darty, is there an option when we do demo the existing signs that we can reuse the existing brick? Or any of that for anything through Buie Park, or make some sort of signage out of that brick? Because that's some nice brick that's already there currently.
Yes, we can request to have that and, and store it and, and store it and use it somewhere else.
Now, is this the third design? Is this by Kimley Horn as well, or? Or is this our planning?
This was, the third design that the mayor spoke about was created using AI. It was, it's not a, in my opinion, I don't think it's a complete realistic option. It is very pretty, but it is not necessarily as realistic, especially looking at today's construction costs compared to the signs that were presented by Kimley Horn.
And I'm just going to toss this out here for the sake of conversation. So we've been given some price ranges for the signs, and I imagine that some of the difference might be the difference between the signs that have the LED in them versus the signs that would be uplit, which might, are, are those, both of those factored into the ranges that you provided?
Yeah, that's a great question. Both those prices are, assuming that they would both be LED.
Okay, so would it be less expensive than if they were uplit?
Yes, but only by about $1,000 or $2,000.
Okay, so it's roughly the same amount?
Yeah.
And then what about the possibility of Public Works taking down the signs that we have? Would that be a thing that we could do instead of paying Kimley Horn to do it? If our city could do it and save some cost there, reallocate that bond money to something else?
Possibly. I'm not sure what the demo part of that, that figure is, but we definitely want some of the materials. And there may be a repurpose for a sign. So I would kind of, I would propose that we, we keep all the, all the materials.
Yeah, so, so then if we were able to take down the signs, either, you know, with the city, or if somebody wanted to donate services, somebody in the community or something, then could we get a different estimate based off of that change in work?
Yes, I actually have that number. So if you all did the demo work yourself, you'd be saving about $5,000 to $10,000 per sign.
That adds up. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. And thanks for having that ready. That's very helpful. Thanks.
Just have to find the time for our Public Works to help us with that.
And absolutely, no disrespect to your designs.
Right.
It's just when I saw this one, it was just, it just spoke to me. So I just wanted to have it up there as an option for the board as well.
Yeah, AI did a good job.
So what do you think a cost of that would be? Something like that, ballpark and?
For the, the third option.
For the third option.
Yeah, because that is all stone, that would be more expensive than either one of these. So it would be beyond $65,000, so you're probably looking at $75,000 to $80,000 for that one.
Each, right.
Yeah.
So back to A and B.
So the cost of taking the signs down ourselves, we could have the same, subsidize the cost of what that beautiful sign cost.
That was not the point. Reallocate.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about the wood. I mean.
Well, is there a synthetic, is there a synthetic option for wood instead of, like a Trex?
There is. I don't know if it would give you all the look that you would want. They tend to be pretty gray in color. You'd lose some of that warmth that that would, and the more like natural feeling of that would. But it is an option that we could explore. I don't know if it would be a significant price savings.
I also, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
I just think that we're looking at these design concepts, and they're, they're just the design concept sitting on a piece of paper. But if you imagine landscaping around it, some beautiful trees, a couple bushes, we plant some flowers around it. I mean, even the uplighting could be protected if it were in a flower bed rather than just sitting on grass. So you could put things around it to protect that if we decided we liked the look of that better. I know the cost difference was nominal, well, not nominal, but not very significant. But with some landscaping around it, I, I actually don't think the extra cost of the wood would necessarily be important in the end. And, and to the point of how long a natural fiber-like wood would last, might need to look at replacing it. I just also wanted to say, while I'm talking, I, I love the versatility of that third sign and how we could take off the temporary signage and leave, and that way we would have the established 1959 put on. I just think that was really a smooth suggestion, and I like that, so thank you.
For the fire station, yes.
And would that change, that eventual change just be factored in, or like, could we just take off the facade ourselves? Would there be a later cost?
You should be able to take that off yourself.
Okay, thank you.
So are the bases to these not stone?
They are. They're Tennessee limestone.
So we've got stone bases on these, and then if you notice at Buie Nature Park, the sign at Buie Nature Park, those pillars are all stone, but it, it's not like a solid block of stone. It, you know, it's a facade. So you've got your material underneath. So I, I don't really agree with the, the price. I, I think we should look into that because, you know, with the material underneath, and then you have, you know, the stone on the outside, it's a lot less expensive than a solid block of, you know, which that AI generated. And AI is fine. I mean, it's not that that can't be built.
So you're suggesting a, a, not a natural stone, but some sort of a laminate stone that goes over like plywood, you're saying? Like what they put on the houses now, right?
Yeah, it's a stone veneer.
It's a veneer?
Yeah, a stone veneer. And that is an option, for sure. We could, they have Tennessee limestone veneer.
I just know that the, the sign, the sign at Buie Nature Park, that's, you know, how the stone was done.
I would just like to share just a little bit about our process of how we got to these two signs. About a year ago, I guess, the Treehouse Playground sign was erected, and that sign features Tennessee limestone within the columns of that. The Historical Village project that will be coming to you at some point relatively soon features quite a bit of Tennessee limestone within the columns of the farmer's market structure and within several of the other columns on that property. And so trying to tie that theme, keeping it as a, a local product, tying that theme to the entrance signs of Fairview, and then eventually, I, I believe our goal would be to tie that theme to the Welcome to Buie Nature Park sign, because that would be our last sign of kind of the older style of city signs. And so trying to look at something that ties together Buie Nature Park, a historical village, and the city altogether with a common sign plan versus having something that looks completely different outside on the edges of town and in the middle of town, you have, you know, kind of a park that holds our whole city together as the basis of that sign, and then Historical Village with older buildings. So using the stone and wood characteristics of that is kind of where the derivative of the signs that are displayed tonight.
So would we also be addressing the sign in front of City Hall?
Not at this time.
So we'll have different signs then?
The sign at City Hall, I believe, serves a, a. The sign at City Hall, I believe, serves a, a significant difference in, it's not a welcome sign. It's not a, a place. I think that sign should serve as a, a message board to the community of what's going on in the city.
And that's one of the other things I wanted to bring up was if that would be an option to redo the sign at City Hall as a message board so that we can actually get more messages out to the, to the community based on the amount of volume that we have driving by City Hall each day and night. I think it would be a great opportunity with this, with the money that we would save on doing these signs to utilize some of that money as a message board to put further communications out to the city, such as events or accidents or anything else. And that would come out of our communications office.
So Commissioner Buffalini, so what I'm hearing, sort of like at the, the high school and their LED sign, would you like something like that in the middle and then the outside be?
Yes, that's exactly so.
Or wood?
And it would be a two-way sign as well. So the sign would go basically where our existing sign is just now. And it would be a two-way sign, so you could see it coming from each direction for informational purposes.
I think that would be a great idea.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty, is this, Representative Kimbley Horn might be able to answer this too. Are they simply just designing this and then we would have to bid out the actual construction? So these are just estimates of the cost? Or are you all being tasked with the construction of it as well?
That is estimates of the cost. Part of the, what they'd be doing is be, they'd be assisting us in the bid process. We would have to, put it out to bid and then, but this, they, they did get estimates from a company. I don't know if they're high or low, you know, we may get quite a bit lower, maybe right on. But the, part of, part of Kimbley Horn's obligation is, is to help us through that process.
Thank you.
And are, are the estimates you gave us representative of what signs like this normally cost?
Yes, they are. I worked with a sign fabricator that does all of Metro Park signage. They do all of Thompson Station signage. And they've been working in the greater Nashville area for a couple decades now. So they were pretty, pretty, gave me the numbers pretty easily because they've seen a lot of signs like this and knew how pieces need to come together and what the materials cost is currently. And they would be the ones fabricating and installing it.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have any estimation on just the longevity of a, of a cedar sign like that? Like just to give us an idea of how often that would need attention? And how well it takes to a new coat of stain when it's needed? Does it bring it back to how it would originally look? Or is it every single time you apply it, it looks a little different? Just curious on that.
It's a good question. It's kind of like staining a deck. Yeah, it would need a fresh coat. You know, if you really wanted the rich color that it would have, you'd usually do it, you know, every five years or so. You'll probably see a lot of neighborhood signs that implement the same type of wood. A lot of them tend to not do a stain, just to reduce the amount of maintenance and let it do that natural patina. I was talking about where it grays out a little bit more, but still has that warmth to it. So yes, you would have a stronger color if you stained it, but there would be more maintenance, more consistent maintenance.
How would the pressure washing before you actually restain, re, you know, reseal that? How would that affect or have an, it might have an effect on the LED portion of the sign?
It shouldn't have any effect. The LED is a really thin strip that's actually built into the back of those stainless steel letters. So those, I don't know Keith, if you could go to the light slide. Perfect. So those stainless steel letters, they're actually mounted up by pins onto the backs of that metal frame, of the metal, metal signs. They sit, they're kind of at a relief, they're sitting off. And the LED strips are built into the letters themselves. And so the light is filling up the back of those letters. So they're protected by the stainless steel sign, the letters themselves.
I just really, you know, want us to have something nice that is not a lot of maintenance. Because we've just, we've got a lot of things that are, you know what I mean? A lot of, a lot of things that our, our Public Works have to do. And I just, if we don't be careful, this is gonna add to something they're gonna have to maintain all the time. That's just my opinion.
I do have a question for Mr. Greer. In, in the new ordinances that we have coming up, the TPUDC, is there gonna be a, a sign standard for the city?
There is not a sign standard for the city. However, the design regulations that are in that, both of these signs do meet the regulations that are within the, the new development code as it reads today.
Because I see Sherwin-Williams put their sign up. And that looks, it looks great with the brick on the bottom. It, it looks very nice and it's classy looking. And I think that would go with the flow of this sign as well. And it would be nice if all the retail would, would kind of do something similar to kind of keep the flow going through. Thank you.
Well, I've got a question for the board, really. Do we have all the information we need to go forward with this tonight? Because I think if we're thinking about maybe doing some of the work ourselves or how we might want to reclaim, would that be something that we would have to have figured out before we vote on this and agree? Or are we only voting on like budgeting the amount tonight? Or we, or would we be voting and getting us into a contract for all of the work?
Could we make a motion to just move forward, authorizing, moving forward with the project and not? Well, I guess not, never mind.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think, I mean, we've got a unique opportunity, I think, with what we have coming up in front of us with the TPUDC meeting on Wednesday as well as the event on Saturday. No, I mean, at the end of the day, this is for the community. And I know that we're all elected by the community, but I think it might be worth putting the signs up and letting the community decide which ones they like best. Mayor, I'm not, not to disagree with you, I do, I do understand.
No, I think that's a great idea.
I do understand the, our Public Works Department is stretched very thin. That is not debatable. However, I do feel that staining these signs could probably be done in a day, if not two, at the absolute most. Stain is relatively cheap. And if every four or five years stain is required, I don't, I don't see it as a huge tax on them. Not to be confrontational with you, but this, I, I just don't, I don't think this is like a huge undertaking to have them have to stain that every once in a while. Again, I would love to let the public decide what they want as a welcome sign coming into the community. And since we already have those meetings scheduled, I think letting them put their input in might be beneficial.
I think that's a good idea.
That's a great idea.
Completely agree.
Great idea.
I agree with that too. Mr. Hall?
Question? How thick are they?
So those are eight inches by eight inch posts, yes.
Okay, that was one of my questions I'm gonna ask. Thank you.
As a point of order, which signs are, is the public gonna decide? Between the two signs that our professional did? Or the two signs plus the AI-generated sign? Or probably, you probably all need to have some agreement about what they are gonna decide on or someone's gonna be upset.
My, my two cents is the, the, the third sign does look great. I have no, no objection to it. I think they're all decent looking signs. I would though, if we are gonna consider that one, maybe a, a dimensional drawing, having an idea of the size and cost broken down on that. If we could have that put together by the time that, that meeting takes place. What is it, Wednesday, the?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. I don't know if that's even doable, but if that is, that would, that would be ideal.
Well, that's what I was gonna suggest, because I think it's probably deceiving to look at one in full vibrant Wizard of Oz color compared to two flat drawings that are more like architecture drawings. So I, I think it's probably unfair to compare the three because they're, it's not apples, it's not apples to apples.
Just because it's AI-generated doesn't mean that it, it can't be real material.
Oh, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that at all.
Yeah, but you said Wizard of Oz.
No, no, the way that, way that the picture looks, it's like in technicolor. And so it of course looks better when it's compared to, uh, flat drawings. So I, I don't, I don't think, I think asking people to pick between the three, I think it's, they still may prefer the third one, Mayor. But I think when you look at the three, I don't think it's fair to compare them.
I agree. I think that we would actually probably need to take these two and put them in a similarly situated, like a, a nice setting that looks like the other one, to give people an idea of what it'll look like when it's actually in place. And then the cost, like Vice Mayor McDonald said, is really important so people know what we're getting into. I actually want to know what people think about this because it's a hard choice. And I don't think that, like what you said before, I don't think that we should sit up here and make this alone. We could ask everybody to weigh in.
I don't mean to interrupt, will you, you finished?
I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Um, I just want to ask Ethan, if, if, will there be proper time during the, that meeting on the thirteenth to even talk about this? Well, I mean, I know they're going over their document.
Just to address that, I don't know if we have to talk about it. I think we can just have the three images on a table and just say, hey, go back there and give us your two cents. Cast a vote pretty much to anyone who's present.
We could do, Richard probably could set something up to have people chime in and cast their vote.
I can, I can do a Facebook poll or something like that and add it. If that's what he was leaning towards, I'm not sure.
If the rest of the commission would be open to that, that's fine. I would be opposed to that just because I feel you're gonna get, who knows who's putting their two cents into that? I would like to make sure that it is community members.
Problem with that is you'll have people from outside the city and other countries.
I think if you'd like to give an opportunity for this public to engage with this, we would be more than happy to set up a, a table where folks can give their, a vote for it on next Wednesday night. I also think it would be good at the strategic planning session on the sixteenth to have, have it at the back of the room and have folks that come and, and view that during that day to give their two cents in on the sign as well. Honestly, with the public engagement, you know, one percent is about the average on percentage basis. So we're talking about a hundred people. I think Wednesday night, we probably have a good chunk of people in here. I think Saturday, hopefully we'll have a good bit of the community that comes out for that involvement. So I think if we get close to a hundred folks engaged, we would probably call it at that point.
I guess if people reached out to us, would we collect that? Or would they have to come in and cast a vote by putting a dot on a board?
Commissioner, I'll leave that up to you. If you would like to vote on their behalf as a audience person in, in attendance, then more power to you.
Yeah, I'll keep little hash marks. Send me your vote, that'll be fine. Sure. But I think we need to agree on a process.
Mayor, I have one question, please.
Yes.
Provided the AI third choice is chosen, would we then want Ms. Gilliam with Kimbley Horn to perfect it from that point?
I was thinking that we were asking Kimbley Horn to make it into a real drawing before the thirteenth. Uh, dimensioned and materials and, right? In that?
Or, well, that needs to be done so they can properly design it and do a cost estimate. But I mean, to, Commissioner Roberts' point, the, the AI has landscaping around it and these don't. So I mean, in order to fairly evaluate them and compare them, they kind of all need to be presented in a similar fashion. So either all, all three like this or, or all three with landscaping and, you know, in an environment and in color. And then you can really see what, what they look like in a, in a fair sort of way. It's just, and that's not a, that's not a legal opinion. That's just having done this for a while and having been through this in another city picking out signs, it's hard to do unless you're seeing them all the same way.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ma'am, is there, is there a time for you to do this and make a 3D rendering of all three signs?
There is not time to do a 3D rendering. Keith, if you go back to the slide before this slide where it's just the two signs, yeah. What we could do is we could take the AI sign and we could put it in this sort of format next to these two signs. That, that's the only time that we would have.
That's fair, that's fair, as long as it's the three are looking the same, I think that's fair. Also, one more question. What would the back of the signs look like? What would be written on them, if anything?
I don't know, did we discuss that, Tom?
We did discuss it. They would be?
Like, thank you for visiting, or?
They do not. Currently, it says, please come again, yeah. And it also says Fairview welcomes you, which I think is a strange way to say welcome to Fairview. But the, the back of the signs, we have one, the Highway ninety-six sign is the only sign that would be at a ninety-degree perpendicular to Highway ninety-six. We're looking at angling that sign so that you wouldn't see the back of it from the roadway. The other two, Welcome to Fairview signs that exist on Highway one hundred, both of those, it is very challenging to see the back of the sign at Historical Village. Especially if you do any kind of landscaping behind the sign, you would never see it. And the sign at the other end of town out by Camp Marymount, you don't, you can't see the back of that sign no matter what way you travel past it. And so although I think it would probably be a great idea to have, you know, Thank You for Visiting Fairview or something on the back, just the locations kind of prohibit.
Right.
And it's beneficial to cost to not have something on the back of the signs if no one can see it.
So you brought up a good point. So one more quick question and then I won't kill this. The sign that's gonna be going over at Historical Village, would that have to be relocated in the future when we do our amphitheater?
That's one of the benefits of having Kimbley Horn, they, they have kind of know where we want it and how, how it's gonna fit in with it.
And do we have an update on that or no?
Soon and very soon.
Okay. I will also note just for discussion purposes, as Annika spoke to, taking the third option and creating an image like you see on the screen before you is definitely preferred. I don't believe we should include any landscaping in that. I think it would be a great task for y'all to task the Parks Landscape Board with creating a landscape plan surrounding that using native plants. We do, the funding for the signs is exclusively for the signs. It is not for the landscaping surrounding that. We do have funding available outside of the sign funding just for the landscape of this project. So I think that'd be a great task for y'all to, to give to them and present signs that are exclusively what is shown on the screen before you.
Will it cost us extra to have the AI-generated sign converted to look like these other two signs for the purposes of this vote?
We will do it to get you guys what you need for Wednesday.
So is that a no?
No.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I, I do have one other question. The bases of these signs that are limestone, is it solid limestone or is it actually a facade?
So you've got an option. Right now, it's just showing, you know, to see the material. You could do solid limestone, you could get that cobbled effect that you see on a lot of walls around here, middle of Tennessee. Or you could do a veneer, you could do a, just a simple limestone veneer. So we've got options moving forward when we select one of the signs.
Because I know that as in the third generated one, if we use a veneer, which, you know, looks fine, you really can't tell the difference, it would be less expensive than solid.
That's correct. Veneer is cheaper than solid limestone.
Motion to defer until the public opinion has been selected?
Second?
For thirty. For 30 days or next meeting, 30 days or?
30 days would, we will be able to have both those meetings. Yeah. 30, defer for 30 days.
Okay, so um, the first meeting in September?
Yes.
Second.
I would just restate your motion to give an exact date.
What is the first, the date of the first meeting in September? September 4th. Motion to defer this item until September 4th, BOC meeting.
Second.
Just for clarification, since we've had tonight's meeting, y'all have been able to ask a lot of questions. And Kimberly Horn has a directive of what to do. Do y'all expect Ms. Annika to come back to that meeting? Or do you feel you have enough information or could communicate through me to get information from Kimberly Horn between now and then to make your decision?
Can we see what kind of questions the community brings up maybe?
Yes.
Answer that bef, well before the next meeting.
I just think it would probably be in her best interest to not have to come back out to Fairview, travel across for a decision that likely would not take that much time on an agenda.
I think that's fair.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11A, 5-0, 2-2, defer. Item 11B, Resolution 40-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision development agreement contract for Highland Trace Townhomes. Mr. Greer.
Our department is asking for this to be deferred. The developer has not returned a signed copy of the development agreement due to the owner of the property being out of town. And so we will be deferring this indefinitely until, or asking for a deferral indefinitely until the signed copy is returned to our office.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11B, 5-0, 2-2, defer. Item 11C, Resolution 41-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the subdivision development agreement contract for Highway 96 Townhomes. Mr. Greer.
Same as before. This is the same developer who is doing this project as well. He is out of town. We're asking for this to be deferred until we receive a signed copy of the development agreement.
Motion to defer.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. 11C, 5-0, 2, defer. Item 11D, Ordinance 2025-14, an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee, budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. On this, this amendment, I was preparing for the audit. We, the city as a whole came in well under budget and I wanted to talk to our auditor about some issues we've been having with public safety payroll calculations. And he, in the past, the comptroller is fine if you turn in your budget. If you're, if the whole budget in itself is under budget. After talking with the auditor, he recommended that we amend the police and fire payroll budgets. And he also said that the comptroller has changed their stance and they now like all the bud, all the departments to come in under budget, which I'm finding dandy with. But this, this, this amendment will get the police and fire departments well under budget. Another thing, the auditor said that there may be, it's, they didn't come in over budget that much, but he said there may be some accruals that go into that number. So he, he recommended doing uh, 150 each. So that's where the 300,000 is. We have came in well over budget in building permit revenue. That's where I was going to take the revenue from and go with it going forward. I've got um, we have, I've met with, with both department heads. I spent an extensive amount of time. We've got the errors corrected, want to move forward in the amended budget at mid-year and get that reflected for next year in fiscal year 26. This is for fiscal year 25. I need to get it passed pretty soon because this is what um, the audit's based off of and this is what goes to the comptroller to be, be, they're audited. They'll, they will be reviewing the audit. So that's the start. Any questions, feel free to ask. I believe that's the overview of it. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
My understanding correctly, there's really not a physical change taking place within as far as dollars going out to different departments. It's simply a book adjustment. Is that, am I understanding that correctly or if you can kind of speak to that?
You're correct. We've spent what we've spent. It ups our budget number is what this amendment does.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Darty, so they're suggesting $150,000 to the police department and $150,000 to the fire department. Was this because of a salary shortfall during our calculations?
We have some, some calculation issues that a few years back, the police and fire went to a 28-day pay cycle. There are some um, straight time hours that were not included in the calculation. Going forward, we are going to get, we are going to get this corrected in fiscal year 26. And you know, the blessing about this is, is in the past, police and fire have had, have never carried a full roster. And there's been so much, we've been training them, getting them trained for them to hop to another agency, you know, other towns. And you know, it's, it's kind of masked itself because we, we never had a full roster. And then the blessing is this year we did. And these calculations, you know, we, it just came, it was like a veil unmasked. It's like, well, we gotta look at this. Cause it, in the past, we, we didn't have issues because we didn't have all of our positions fully staffed.
Right. So, so that $300,000 is unexpected revenue basically. So we're dividing it 150 each. Are we giving the departments $150,000 each to utilize for additional salary? Or is it coming back to the city?
No, this, this, this is for last year's budget.
Just for clarification.
Yeah, this is, has nothing to do with this year. It's, it's just adding 150,000 each department into their budget for last year. And then I'm going to, then that way, I'm waiting for this to pass. I can't close out the year until, because of the auditors and the comptroller want that, we, there's no revenue issue. There's no um, there's no issue as far as, other than the fact that the calculation was wrong. That's going to fix for fiscal year 25, for fiscal year 26. We have located the errors, going adjusting that and that'll be in the mid-year budget amendment that will be addressed with, with new numbers. But I think for this year, for fiscal year 25, to be able to close out the budget, to be able to be in compliance with the comptroller, to adhere to the recommendations of our auditors, this is why this amendment is before you. And to be quite honest, five years ago, with our budget coming under budget as a whole, we wouldn't be having this conversation. It would just be turned in.
Just out of curiosity, who caught this error?
I did.
So the comptroller signed off on it last, last year and said everything was good, but then we found the error.
I think this is, I think you're thinking about another agenda, another line item.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Is, just trying to follow this, is there, is there money coming from the, the permit, building permits that is being used to move over?
Yes, that's where I will show the money come. I will show um, additional revenue in the building permits of 300,000, which we budgeted 400 and some thousand. We had 809,000 actual. So I will get that budgeted number closer to the actual and then that'll balance us out with the, the police and fire.
The only thing, I believe there's a percentage of the building permit funds that go towards the Parks Department. So that's not being affected in any way.
That's the operating portion, portion of it.
Thank you.
Mayor? Will we get an updated copy of the overall 2025 budget once these changes are made so we can just see it? What we have in front of us is just a, a small portion of the budget, but I'd like to see the overall.
Sure. It's, it's not um, yes, I can give you all the amendments and give you every document.
Yeah, just the final copy. And I imagine once the comptroller approves it, we get that final copy.
Well, the way it works is you have the original budget that's passed in July or before July 1 and then you have amendments. And so this is an amendment for last year's budget. We've already passed the 26. So I can give you all the documents, which are all public record.
Well, when, sure, when you amend the final budget, because we, this is the one that we just closed out from last year. So you're amending it. So there will be like one final that shows just how all the line items ended up that year.
Sure, yes.
So that's the one just for, for record keeping, just like the final after this is all done, the whole thing.
Sure. Yes, no problem.
Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11D passes 5-0, 11E, ordinance 2025-15, and ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee, budget for fiscal year 2025-26 budget. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor. This, this amendment to the fiscal year 26 is for the appropriation of funds, bond funds for the interstate I-40 lighting exchange to, to spend those monies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question from the board?
Mayor? It doesn't really further much along, but I just still want to reiterate that I wish we were waiting until we are having our strategy session to talk, talk about an expenditure like this. But I understand the board voted for it last time, but I just want to repeat that.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11E passes 5-0. Item 11F, Resolution 43-25, a resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, amending the fiscal year 2026 budget. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Got a letter from the state comptroller saying that they wanted ordinance portion of our budget to match our detail. The detail showed the $2,200 in ARPA and the ordinance part did not, which is exactly the way I turned it in for fiscal year 25 and the state approved it. I talked to our representative at the comptroller. He said it must have been an oversight. Please get this resolution passed for, to just say that we're using the ARPA money and so that the ordinance number matches the detail. And it's, nothing is changing as far as what we're spending or anything. It's just getting the ordinance to match the detail. And all we gotta do is one reading tonight, send him that and they'll, they'll approve the budget.
Mayor? Move to approve.
We'll take a motion first and then?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
Mr. Darty, you said $2,200 or 2.2 million?
Yes, 2.2 million.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Do we have a breakdown of exactly what we're using this for?
This is all stormwater projects.
Do we have a list of the projects?
Yes, we do.
And the citizens have access to this?
I don't know, but I can, I can, I can take care of that. I need, I don't know if they're on the website or not. Do you know, Rachel? Richard, I'm not sure if they have the access to it or not, but I, I can give anybody access. It's not anything we're hiding.
I think we might have talked about it at some point. It's the, is this the culverts and things like that? There was a list at some point. There's a meeting where it was all discussed, but I agree, it would be nice to have that posted just so everybody understands what else being affected by it or addressed by it.
I think we need a refresher because I think we're waiting for the paving to be done on Northwest Highway to get started on some of those culverts.
Well, we've got several areas that the culverts are going to be working on. So we're trying to work with the paving. The paving's coming out of the bond. The stormwater's coming out of ARPA. And we're trying to coordinate the best we can. We've got so many projects competing at the same time, but um, yeah.
Yeah, you gave, you gave a synopsis during the town hall about where we were with the paving projects. And so I think maybe overlaying that with the, reminding everybody, we do have the stormwater projects that are coming up on the heels of that. And rough time estimates to just kind of refresh everybody's memories would be probably helpful.
Yeah, we're trying to hit the, the worst places, you know, but I don't know how much money it'd take to get everything, probably more than we'd ever have. But we're, some work on, well, I don't have a list with you. I know there's work on Horn Tavern, Sleepy Hollow, a few other roads. On Cumberland, there's a few, a few areas that were Chester. And also was that Forest, what's the one that goes right beside Jingo?
There was.
Glen Haven.
Glen Haven.
There was four locations on Northwest Highway, three locations on Chester Road, one location on Horn Tavern and then also on Sleepy Hollow.
Okay.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11F passes 5-0. 11G is for discussion only. Review of Planning Commission and Parks and Landscape Board. I'll turn this over to Commissioner Buffalini. He brought this to the agenda.
I did. Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things. I've been to, I was on the Parks and Landscape Board and I've been. and I've been to a lot of the meetings, I was also the secretary there, and they don't have any tasks. They don't know what they do half the time, they had to cancel a couple of meetings because they they had no agenda. So I I spoke this past week, and I believe we all got an email after I spoke with uh the chairman, David Dodero, um, to task the PLC with some items and just to give us some ideas of what kind of projects he'd be into going over. And I know that we all have gotten that email, um, just tasking them with some things, uh, like I said, this is just for discussion, uh, for Veterans Park, uh, they want to add a fishing pier there, and this would also be a mixed funding from American Legion funds, city funds, donor funds, state and federal funds, if they can get that as well. Um, they also wanted to make ADA compliant sidewalks over at Veterans Park. They also wanted to finish up the uh, the basketball pad that we've been discussing for the past three years, I believe it's been just about, right? Mr. Darty, about three years now, so the pad's there, it's just they can't do anything because it's still a little unsafe on the, around the edges. So they wanted to get that dirted and mulched. Um, they also discussed some options over at Bowie Nature Park, working on the erosion, uh, on the, on the effect of the trails. Um, so ju- we just want to give them something to do as as a appointed board, um, just to to utilize their services so they don't just sit there and look at each other uh for an hour and a half, two hours, once a month. So that that was just one of the uh discussion items, so we we could discuss that before I go to my next uh item.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Commissioner Buffalini, I, um, it's a good point, I think um, the city spent quite a bit of money on a Parks Master Plan, did we not, a handful of years ago? I think it would be beneficial to potentially have a work session with Parks and Landscaping Board as this, and and this board to discuss where we're at with that Parks uh Master Plan. And quite positive that there's somewhere in there that we could just pick up where we left off and and they could find some some things to focus on. Um, it's been a while since I've looked at it, but I know it exists, and I know that it it was quite a price tag that the city paid for it. So it would be beneficial to revisit that and and have Parks and Landscaping Board probably put some time into revisiting that prior to a workshop so they could come with some ideas on what what could be uh taken from that.
Right, and tha- and that's the reason why I brought this up, is so that, like I said, so that we can task them, give them tasks to do and help the city, especially with landscaping around our new signs that we're going to be buying and everything else that goes on there.
So, this board is an advisory board, um, so how does that work with task, tasking them, Mr. Carter?
You would task them with items that you wish them to advise you on. That sounds like a lawyer answer, and maybe it is, but I think um,
That's not.
I think Commissioner McDonald is correct, to the extent that there's a a plan, uh, it needs to be brought to their attention in in joint meeting between the BOC and the Parks Commission. It could be in the form of a special called meeting where you discuss the park, park plan and and things that you would like to see them look at and prioritize uh for you, and maybe make some suggestions about how the city might pay for it uh through uh private donation or city budget or grants that could be applied for. Uh, might be an appropriate use of the uh Park and Landscape Board.
So I think a workshop would probably be more cost effective, so maybe
Yeah, it could be in the form of a workshop.
Workshop. And I think, I think maybe
That's publicly called.
I think maybe they might feel a little lost, so if we had a workshop to kind of give them kind of a directive as to, you know, how they they really need an agenda for their meeting and um they need to kind of know, I think, the definition of advisory and how to move forward, you know, to provide information to us, so.
Right, they did the same thing with with Bowie, uh, when they did the playset, so they became an advisory. They helped with costing and just design purposes and stuff like that, so.
I mean, they still need to, they're a public, they're a public body, so they need to have an agenda and they need to uh have a chairman and a vice chairman, and they need to have their meetings advertised uh so the public can attend. Uh, both Ethan and Rachel know how to create agendas, and I don't, not trying to volunteer them or volunteer them, but perhaps they can help them create an agenda uh for their meetings. Uh, and then it would be helpful for this board to let them know what the expectation is or or what speci- what specifically you're requesting assistance on. And again, I go back to, we have this master plan, uh, not all things are equal. So if there's, you know, if if you want to see improvements at the fishing pond, then, you know, maybe that's something that you can say, hey, we need your advice on what we do with this fishing pond to make it more functional, whether it's some sort of dock or whether it's making sure it's properly stocked or that the water is the proper pH for whatever type of fish you're trying to fish. Uh, or Bowie Park or, you know, whatever other parks, I mean, uh, they expect a group of citizens that are appointed just to know what they're supposed to do when some of them probably have never served on a board, uh, is probably a big ask.
For what it's worth, I attended one of their meetings a few weeks ago, and we had a pretty robust conversation. So to add to this conversation, uh, it's more than the Board of Commissioners going to them and tasking them with things. They also have a lot of great ideas, and they do run some events, and I think they need from us to help them with some ideas or some support to raise the profile of some of the things that they're trying to do. So I think it it works both ways. I would like to have the chair come to our BOC meetings every now and then and give us a report and have us have an open dialogue, the full board and the chair of that committee, and also the Planning Commission, probably. I think that would be nice if we could do just an open conversation with them once in a while and have them bring some of the concerns of their members to us also. Um, Planning Commission's different because they are done up here in a more open televised way. The Parks and Landscape is not broadcast, so nobody knows what they're talking about or what they need. So I I like Vice Mayor McDonald's idea, we start all over again, we've got some new members coming in. We've got a great opportunity to kind of reset and move forward, but um, but it, they they could use some of our support as well of as our, us using their support.
I think the Parks Master Plan was like a hundred thousand dollars that the city spent. So it's a pretty robust document that they should be able to figure out where is a good point to pick up on that. I think it's a good starting point, I mean, we did spend a hundred thousand on it after all. Um, and those, and I don't know, Mr. Hall, if that's something that you maybe just want to bring up at the next meeting? Meeting for them to focus on, to try to glean some information on where they're at with it and where they could go from there.
I've got a couple of things I'd like to add tonight, if you've got time. Uh, first off, we did elect a secretary, Ms. Kristen Courtney has graciously took the secretary job, she's our newly appointed member. Uh, one other thing, um, um, we had a pretty good discussion the other night on several projects. Some of them, Mr. Buffalini has already mentioned, and I think that'll be good to head forward. And like you said, we've got a uh hundred thousand dollars budget in there that we can utilize for, hopefully, to, by the end of the year, that we'll get the uh cloverleaf trees planted. And Richard might can give me an update today on the uh, the uh maintenance of uh trimming of the shrubs and that type thing. I know you said after July fourth that they would probably get to it, but do you have any update on that right now, Richard?
They're, they're hoping to have everything completed with trimming of the bushes and everything by the end of this month.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, but anyway, that's was just of the meeting the other night. We had, uh, Ms. Ms. Mary was, was the uh friends representative here the other night, and then I think she can stip- stipulate everything that I've mentioned so far, you know. So uh, I think we headed in the right direction the other night, so uh, we get some plans together. One other thing I might mention that Ethan brought up a while ago about the, the tasking us to uh draw up a plan for the uh shrubbery around the signs, that can also, I think, can be utilized with the uh Tree Bank Fund money and not have to go as far as that goes, but uh, we have an excellent gentleman that helped bring uh, bring the, together the uh signage out at the Bowie Park Playground, Dan DeWillis, he works for um, um, let me find where it, I wrote it down, mendigo, excuse me, Cheekwood, he's excellent. He has some friends there at Cheekwood that also was on the Parks and Landscape Board, and I think with their help that we can design the the uh shrubbery around all the signs and we can pay for it out of the Parks and Landscape, I mean, the uh Tree Bank Fund. So I was real pleased with the meeting the other night.
I just have one other question, actually, Commissioner Buffalini, you mentioned something about an email. Were you talking to the board saying that there was an email that we had this week?
Yes.
I don't know what email that is.
Okay, so um Chairman David Dodero sent an email to, uh, I believe the entire board, I did, I don't know if anybody else got it. Yeah, they got it.
Did you all get it?
Um, just of some ideas that him and I had discussed, I asked him to put it on paper and email it over.
I did not receive that email, if you all would make sure that my address was right on it, I did not get it.
It was quite a list, yes.
I think we can forward that over to her.
Can, but I'd be very careful about replying all where you're interacting with each other and
I think it'd
Perhaps our city manager can
Be best to just ask, ask David to make sure that he has Commissioner Roberts correct.
And I received it, I would, I can, I can pop it up to you.
Thank you.
It's fine to reply directly to Mr. Dodero, but I wouldn't do it in a reply all sort of way because then you're inviting a sunshine violation.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, it was, it was a detailed list that we had discussed, and he put it down, so it's some of the things that we should definitely approach.
Okay, so on to the Planning Commission.
Yes, um, I I wrote this down, so I'm going to read it because I didn't want to forget anything. Um, as city commissioners, it's our collective responsibility to ensure that all appointed boards reflect the higher standards of integrity, accountability, and preparedness. Um, these attributes are especially critical for the, for the Planning Department and Planning Commission, which is tasked to making decisions that directly shape the future, growth, and character of our city. Members of the Planning Board are expected to thoroughly review case materials, understand relevant policies, and meaningfully consider public input. These are not symbolic roles, they are working appointments that demand diligence and active participation. These are also paid tax dollars being utilized. The effectiveness of the commission depends on each member's preparedness and engagement. At this time, I am asking that the board review, I'm not going to say specific members, but just current members of the Planning Board, um, and this recommendation is not made lightly, but with the results ongoing and well-documented concerns related to consistent lack of preparation, particularly in failure to review case files, attendance, review of supporting documentations, and policy guidance ahead of scheduled meetings, this pattern has, in my judgment, impaired the commission's ability to operate at high standard of community, that our community deserves. Um, these positions carry not only weight and responsibility, but also the benefit of compensation, like I said earlier, at citizens' tax dollars, so whether they're present or not, they are still getting compensated at two hundred dollars per meeting. Further underscoring the expectations uh of commitment, um, when those expectations are not met, it's incumbent upon us as the board to act in the best interest of the public and the Planning Commission's mission. Um, so I would just like to let the Planning Commission, let Planning Board know and understand that we, we, when they log on to their computers, there's an attendance that that logs on as well. So we all have access to that, we can see who logs on and who doesn't. I don't understand how some planning members um make decisions without ever logging on, without ever seeing anything there. They're being compensated, also, some members have missed multiple times, um, four, five times in the past eight or nine months. Um, that should be addressed as well, I'm not saying to replace anybody, what I'm just suggesting is that to let them know that we see it as a board, um, I see it, and I'm, I don't want to waste tax dollar monies. And we had nine people um, apply for being part of that board, and we turned down some people that are, that are very qualified because we just didn't have the space for them. And if people that are on the board now don't want to do what they're asked to do and being paid to do, um, that they also volunteered to do, then perhaps they should resign from their position, and we could replace them with people that have wanted to do or or do want to do um, and be part of the Planning Board and operate diligently and look at the drawings, look at what's affecting everything. Not just vote no every time they're sitting in that chair, because it, they don't, they just, that's just they vote because they don't want any growth whatsoever. Or they vote yes every time because they're being asked to by other people or suggested or anything like that. I'm not saying that that happens or not, I'm just giving examples. So that's one of the things that I wanted to discuss as a Board of Commissioners, just to reassure that, you know, like I said, I'm not asking to eliminate any people, I just want to let them know that this is the deal, this is, this is what they signed on for, and if they're choosing not to do it, then step aside and let us appoint people that are currently ready to do this and stand up for the citizens of Fairview and do the right thing and not waste tax dollar money.
Mayor.
Yes.
Figured I'd, I'd just speak to it since I am the member of this body that serves on the Planning Commission. There was elements of that I don't disagree with, um, there were elements that I do. I I I think just as a piece of it, there are, there are, there, there's a possibility that individuals' lives conflict with their duties of the Planning Commission. It's not that they're wasting tax dollars or that they're lazy or that they don't, life changes. They might have had the time to, to dedicate to that board uh when they took that role on, and then things change, uh, and they become just busier, right, to where they can't dedicate the time necessary, um, which is fine, there's nothing wrong with that. I think it's uh, you know, there's no shame in the fact that you've just, I mean, we all have personal lives, we all have professional careers and things going on that just sometimes take away from things that we would like to spend our time on. So I don't, I don't think it's as malicious as that may have come off, and you may not have meant it that way, Commissioner Buffalini. But I think my message to anybody on the Planning Commission, whether you're super involved or not, I mean, you may be busy, and that's okay, and I don't think there's any shame in saying, hey, I I I don't feel I can, I can put this. And I'm not saying that there is anybody on the board currently that is in that position, I'm just um, I guess I'm just saying that not everybody's up there wasting time, uh, that there are individuals that probably are just a little busier than they would like to be in for whatever reason, they just miss meetings. Um, that doesn't mean they don't care. Um, but to the point of, yes, we did have quite a few people apply for this Planning Commission this last uh meeting when we did appointments, um, so if 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 you are feeling that you are somebody on that board that doesn't have the time to dedicate to the, to the seat, you know, I commend you if you raise your hand and say, I don't think I have the time to do this anymore, and then we can put someone in there that is feeling that they have the time to dedicate to that seat. But um, I think it's, I think it's okay to let everyone know as a reminder that serves on any board for that matter, Planning Commission, landscaping, um, Boza, all, all the boards that we, that we appoint citizens to, that it it is a, it is a coveted seat, that there is a lot of citizens that would like to t- to have an opportunity to serve on. So um, there's no, there's no shame in just saying, hey, I I served my time and I, I just don't have it in me anymore to to dedicate what's required um of that seat, but um, I think it's what's required of that seat. But I think it's a good reminder to those, to everybody to that, that that option's there. Like, you don't have to feel that you just have to drag it out until the end of the term, that there isn't, there's no shame in just saying, I can't do this anymore.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McDonald. Yeah, and that's, I might have, may have come across a little harsh with that, but I just, I just feel that after talking to a lot of citizens and then just seeing what's happening and then actually going on and seeing attendance issues, I do know that in our charter, we do have an attendance, I believe they're allowed to miss three meetings in a calendar year. Is that correct, Mr. Greer?
No, that's not the rule.
I don't have the rule right in front of me. I can have it in just a moment, but I do not believe that that is accurate as far as the calendar.
I know what it is. You missed three in a row. They asked you to leave.
If you missed three in a row?
Yes, you're removed. It's not a calendar year. It's three in a row, and that's the rule that's been set in place. Then you're removed.
I'm not asking for anyone's removal. I'm just suggesting to the current planning, and we appreciate everything that they do do. I'm not saying that we don't. I'm just saying that if they feel that they're, they have too many obligations just now in life, that it would behoove them to step aside. And given the current status that we have now with the applicants from the last time, I mean, we had an overwhelming, for the first time I've seen it in five years coming here, that many applicants for a Planning Commission or any seat, rather, I think now would be a great opportunity for them to step aside and for us to appoint someone from those current applicants.
So, I sit on the Planning Commission as well. And if, while Commissioner Buffalini is policing everyone, if he would police me and notice that I'm not one time logged into IDT. So, I'm not real sure how you can police people properly, just saying that you're looking, you know, we have a rule on attendance. You know, the rule is there, it's been placed there for a reason, and it's, if they miss three consecutive meetings, they're removed. As far as policing IDT, if you look under, I've served on the Planning Commission for over 15 years, and I've never once logged into IDT because I go do site visits, I'm involved in the staff review meetings, I meet with the applicants, I review each project without IDT on paper, and then I meet with Ethan prior to the Planning Commission meeting so that we can go over projects if I have questions. So, I don't know how the policing can be accurate in that respect because the way I do it, I never log on to IDT.
So, Mayor, all due respect, I wasn't naming names?
I wasn't finished.
It's okay. I wasn't naming names?
You're interrupting me.
Okay.
I wasn't finished.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Okay. So, also with, in respect to attendance, I missed two meetings in a row because my daughter had a serious, very severe bike accident, and I was in Mississippi taking care of her. I can say over the more than 15 years that I've served, I can probably count on one hand how many times I've missed. But sometimes there are situations where people have to miss. So, you know, I don't believe people for, you know, $200 a month that, you know, they choose to serve because they want to, they want to make a difference in our community. And I don't think that they're serving up here for any other reason on the Planning Commission other than trying to help our community grow in the proper way. And I just don't see how the policing is effective in choosing who is doing it the right way, in your opinion, or the way, you know, their own way. Because the way I do it is not getting on IDT. So, you can't, you know, police me as far as saying, well, you're not on IDT, so you're not, you're not doing what the Planning Commission or the Board expects of you. So, I'm not sure how that works.
Mayor, all due respect, you know, I mean, we have, we have one planning member sitting in the crowd. I think she does a great job here. She's been just about every meeting. I think she maybe missed one, but she sits up there and, you know, she's, I think she's doing a great job. There are some people up here that I feel just aren't, if they're not logging on to IDT, how are they getting their knowledge to vote on something, to make an educated vote? Also, you said you don't log on to IDT, that you meet with staff. We pay the staff to give you updates? Is that, is that what we're doing? You're utilizing their time for their updates rather than logging on to IDT?
Would you like me to answer that?
Yes, please.
I think our staff has said many times that they have an open-door policy, and if we have a question or we need to review something, we can absolutely go to them anytime we need to.
So, all nine members can go to Planning Department anytime they want?
Absolutely.
If I may interject for just a moment, just because I, I want to communicate to everybody who's listening just about the diversity of perspectives on the Board. And I respect everyone's ability and place to say what they think and how they think things ought to be done and seen, rather than taking an approach where we're assessing the quality of the work of other people based on what we see as success metrics. I think that it would be nice if the BOC encourages the members of the Planning Commission to continue pushing forward and say, if you, if you are not engaging in these ways, they might be helpful methods to continue to understand how to look at the issues that face you. But a lot of these members have been up here on the Planning Commission for a long time. They predate my tenure as a Commissioner up here. So, I would say that rather than calling into question their methods that they've been using for a long time, we would be more specific and perhaps have a conversation through city staff with the specific people that we have a concern with rather than sort of broad-based criticisms, which might get into how, you know, several other people might be, how Board members communicate with city staff from the Board of Commissioners. We all have different ways of doing things and getting the work done and being successful. So, I think my main point is, is that success and work looks like a lot of different ways to different people. And if there are targeted specific things that you have in mind, which it sounds like there are, and you've chosen to take sort of a blanket approach, Commissioner Buffalini, but if there are specific things, I think going through the avenues that wouldn't violate the Open Meetings Act would maybe be a less, a more positive approach that might not make everybody on the Planning Commission or other Boards feel like the way that they're doing things is open to scrutiny.
Right. And I agree with that. And that's the way I kind of came out forward. I didn't go after anyone specifically. I mean, the mayor got very defensive about her position. I didn't come after anyone specifically. All I did, and she's, there she goes with the head. All I was saying is that I just want the Planning Commission to understand that they're being compensated to do a job that they applied for, that they volunteered for, and are being compensated for. I just want them to do the job the right way and give the proper knowledge back to our Planning Department when they're making their recommendations to the Board of Commissioners of what we're gonna be doing with the city and how we're gonna be going about building things. If somebody, if they were able to log on to IDT or go and sit with our Planning Department and understand things a little bit better, perhaps they might make different decisions on certain developments that are being planned or approved or anything like that. So, my thing was just letting them know what their job is and how to go about it, IDT. The mayor said that they're, all nine members are more than willing, welcome to go to our Planning Department and sit with our Planning Department and utilize their time and their knowledge and education. Go for it. But IDT, you can learn a lot as well. If you come to the Planning Board and you don't know anything about it, perhaps step aside. Let people that did volunteer and want to do it, that know about it, understand it, want to do it. That's all I'm saying. I wasn't coming after anybody. I wasn't asking anybody to, I wasn't coming to say, I want this person removed and this person removed. I didn't say that. All I was saying is how to do the job, what we expect of them, what the city expects of them. And if they can't do that, then by all means, like Vice Mayor McDonald said, step aside. You know, we will never judge. I mean, we appreciate everything that they do. That's all I have to say about that. That's-
Mayor, if I may.
So, we don't use IDT anymore, so I guess we should use the proper terminology now. Mr. Greer?
Three quick points. It's in the municipal code. Article 14, Section 103 is the removal for cause. Any member of the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the Board of Adjustments and Review, whose term is not expired, may be removed from the office by the Fairview City Commission, and a replacement for the unexpired term may be appointed upon two successive absences by the member from regularly scheduled or specially called meetings or is absent from 25% of any regularly scheduled or specially called meetings in a calendar year. Additionally, any member of the Planning Commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the Board of Adjustments, may be removed from office by the Fairview City Commission, and a replacement for the unexpired term may be appointed for any member who fails to obtain at least the minimum number of hours of training for the said member in any calendar year as required by the state statute or municipal ordinance, or fails to file with the state of Tennessee the annual ethics statement required by the state Ethics Commission. All members of the Planning Commission appointed by the Fairview City Commission shall obtain at least six hours of approved training for Planning Commission members each calendar year. It shall be the responsibility of such members to report and document their training hours to the appropriate city of Fairview, Tennessee official upon completion of the training sessions. So, that is directly from the municipal code. Wanted to make sure we had the three meetings kind of is accurate because it's 25% of the year, so that would be three meetings, but two successive meetings is also in there as well. Piece number two, we're switching over to the electronic agendas. Y'all all received a Planning Commission agenda for next week, this afternoon. Members of the Planning Commission, it should get a whole lot simpler for them to review documents because all of the documents that they need to review are attached as PDF attachments under each individual item. We do, we no longer use IDT. We have switched over to GovWell internally. The Planning Commission no longer needs to access any internal software since all documents that they will need to review will be attached as PDF documents on the agenda. And then item three, I do have an open-door policy. Any of you are welcome at any time. My only goal in our department is to make sure that the five of you making decisions and the nine Planning Commissioners making decisions are the most informed as possible. So, if y'all have anything that you ever need, come swing by.
So, just to reiterate, three in a calendar year, 25%, 12 months divided by four is three. So, three in a calendar year or two consecutive meetings.
Mayor?
Yes.
I want to ask Ethan, can you repeat possibly about the Parks and Landscape Board? Just in the event we were to have somebody step aside themselves, would we bring it to the Board for a new appointment?
This section of the municipal code does not speak to the Parks and Landscape Board. I'd have to get to that section. This is for the Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and Board of Adjustments.
We had some excellent choices this past time, and, you know, like, if someone were to step aside, I'd like to know the process to move forward with that.
Commissioner Hall, I believe that the Parks and Landscape Board was actually just organized
Yes.
recently. So, I don't think that there would be any-
There may not be any regulations on it, so. But in the event that we were to have somebody step aside, I'd like to not lose the ones that was interested in being on that Board.
A vacancy on any of those Boards would require an appointment from this Board?
I believe so.
Right, yeah.
Want to get it out public more than anything else.
Just on a cursory search of the Parks and Landscape Board ordinance, I do not see a section about removing anyone. As Vice Mayor McDonald spoke to, anyone who does step down or step away would have to be, that seat would have to be appointed by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. I still have all the applicants' forms that they filled out. So, in the event that happens, I'll bring it to the Board then. Thank you.
Just for clarification, Mr. Greer, you had read three in a calendar year, two consecutive. Is it at the discretion of the Board or is it three and then removal?
While we're waiting on the answer, I just, again, I'd like to weigh in to just say, I don't think that the Board of Commissioners is necessarily here to try to look for ways to remove members of the Planning Commission tonight. I think instead, if we're diagnosing some issues, we might want to be more precise about what those concerns are and then bring them to the members individually through city staff so that we're following the correct avenues and give them an opportunity to be successful. So, for what it's worth, from my perspective, I think this is an opportunity to share that somebody is displeased with some of the performance. But I think we would need to be more specific and also acknowledge that we are going through some changes that might make it a little bit easier for all of us to review the information that we need to have prepared for the meetings. But, again, I don't, I don't think that we are springing into action to have people removed and then appoint new people tonight. I'm not getting, I'm certainly not in that area. I'd really like to be more specific if you could because, again, you, you're sort of vacillating, Commissioner Buffalini, between broad-sweeping statements but following it up with very precise, yet vague thoughts about what it seems like particular people on the Planning Commission. And so, I'd like to ask that we give them an opportunity to remediate that through some ideas and give them a chance, which we could do so that they can all be successful because I think we value them and we appreciate the time and commitment that they're giving to the Commission.
Right. And, sure. I'm not going after anyone specifically. I asked that we review the Planning Commission. This is just a discussion. That's it. We're not voting on removing anybody or asking anybody to, we're not asking to be removed or anything like that. I'm just saying that I'm just putting it out there of what their responsibilities are and what, what happens if they don't, if they don't, if they can't go through with their, what they volunteered or signed up for. And being that there are other people that are able to do this and have applied for it, I mean, we have, I think, six additional people, seven additional applications that, you know, half of them are qualified to be on a Planning Commission based on their background and what they, what they've been saying in their, in their application to us and what they've stood up there and said. I'm just saying that if somebody on the Planning Commission right now doesn't want to do it or says it's too much or they can't do it in time, step down. That's not a problem. But there has to be training as well, and I just want to make sure that they understand that there's going to be accountability and preparedness. They have to go to a meeting prepared- prepared with the, with what's in front of them, what's on the agenda. That's what I'm asking, and that's specifically what I'm saying. I'm not asking for anyone specifically to be removed. I'm not asking for that. That was just a discussion tonight to talk about putting it out there for the Planning Commission. That was it.
Are there qualifications that people have to meet to be appointed to the Planning Commission?
They have to be a resident of Fairview, and they serve at the pleasure of the BOC. And if they violated the attendance policy, then I suspect Ethan would bring that to their attention and to your attention, and then you might have, you know, you might have a specific reason to remove them or consider that their removal, or warn them they'll be removed unless they start coming to the meetings more regularly, and that, that would be the appropriate thing to do. But this, this board could vote to remove any one of the Planning Commissioners at their discretion. Sometimes that happens after an election, you know, where you have a, a new board and, and they want to replace the Planning Commissioners because they were unhappy with the direction of the Planning Commissioner, or what have you. To the extent that Commissioner Buffalini was wanting to send the word out that, that he would like them to come to the meetings better prepared, I suspect the ones that have watched the meetings will have received that message. Now, and then if, if Commissioner Buffalini wants to, this board to consider removal of a specific person, then he certainly can put that on an agenda item, and then this board can have its say. I'm not aware that any Commissioners, any Planning Commissioner at this point hasn't violated the attendance policy. And I'm sure Mr. Greer can tell us if that's the case.
I will note that in this Article 14, Section 103, it does not say shall be removed from office in any of these. It is only a may be removed from office. So it is, they, as Mr. Carter spoke, they do serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. So y'all hold the power in, in if they are there or not, whether it's for cause or, or another reason.
I'm just hoping that this discussion is noticed to the Planning Committee, Planning Board. That's, that's all this discussion was for. That's it. I'm not asking to remove anyone.
A quick question. Is the, the 12 meetings, if there are special meetings added, then take us to 13 or 14 meetings a year, then would that mean, like, you'd have to miss more than three meetings to get to the 25%? Do those go into the cumulative meetings?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And also, that's a good point that you made about maybe and not shall be, because that's two different definitions.
I would just like to close this with saying I'm quite proud of what the work the Planning Commission has done, and sure, there's people that have things come up and can't attend meetings as often and sometimes get too passionate about certain topics and maybe not remember the role that they serve as a Planning Commission member, where you are simply too decide in your best estimation if it fits into the regulations and guidance that the city has, ordinances that the city has in place. However, as a body, I don't think that, I don't want citizens to have this concern that the Planning Commission is astray or has lost its way. I think we, we have really good conversation on, on topics that are warranted to have depth to the conversation, and at the end of the day, I think we make, we make quality decisions.
I agree with that. Sitting on the Planning Commission as well, I think our Planning Commission has great discussion. I think they make great decisions for our community, and they send recommendations to the board based on our staff's review of projects and what our staff directs them and the information they give. So I, you know, I appreciate each and every one of them for all the work they do and, and the decisions that they don't come at lightly. Anything else from the board on this discussion item? Okay, item number 12, roundtable, mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Buffalini?
Yeah, I just want to say that football season's starting. I know that the middle school were out there today, and thank you to Vice Mayor McDonald for contributing his funds to helping that stadium sound like it did today, and it sounded pretty, pretty great. I'm not going to lie. It sounded really good. So thank you very much, Vice Mayor McDonald. Really appreciate the, the effort and everything that you've been doing to help them and also the Little Titans, kind of the Fairview Titans. So thank you for that. Thank you to our police and fire. I see the, they've been on the move this week and the past two weeks. I've seen them flying down, so thank you very much to everything that they've been doing. That's all I have right now, Mayor.
Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor and Board, and all the city staff, police, for being here and everybody who's attended and is listening at home or will watch this in the future. Just a couple of quick reminders. Yes, we have middle school football tonight. We've got a scrimmage tomorrow night at home. And then I think the girls soccer, or the, what is it, the lady Yellow Jackets soccer team had a very successful play day last week, so we're looking for a great season out of them also. Just a reminder that there's the book sale for the Friends of the Public Library. On the 20th is the member preview night. The 21st and 22nd, the book sale is open from 9:00 to 4:00, and on the 23rd, it's open from 9:00 to 3:00, and the sale will go to the cost of books, equipment, and programs for the Fairview Public Library. The band is hosting Wilco at 7:00 on September 13th, and remember, that's just going to be a huge event with lots of people, lots of crowd, and there's opportunity to volunteer if anybody wants to. A reminder about our blood drive coming up on September 4th, 2:00 to 5:00 here at City Hall that Mr. Ross mentioned earlier. And then also, just to recap, remember your sales tax dollars of things you buy here in Fairview, keep dollars here in Fairview for our revenue. So shop local, and, and that goes for your gas or groceries, anything retail that you're purchasing. And thanks again to everybody for a lovely evening. We hope everyone had a great first week back to school.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank all of our city employees, all the way from police to parks, to the legal, to administration, to planning. Everyone, y'all do such a great job. I was going to talk more about the stuff that I've already talked about with the Parks and Landscape Board as far as the update on the cloverleaf and the projects that we discussed the other night. But I also want to thank all the Board of Commissioners. I want to thank all the Planning Commission members, the Boza members, as well as the Parks and Landscape Board members. They're part of it, too. It's all a system, and everyone does a great job. Thank you.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we'll have another meeting before these games happen, but put it on your calendar. And Commissioner Buffalini addressed, touched on it, Friday, the 22nd is home for Fairview High School. Kickoff the football season against East Hickman, so going to need a crowd for that one. I think they beat us last year for the first time in a while, so we don't want that to happen again. Need, need support. And the Fairview Titans will have their first home game, little ones, the following day at the same field, the high school field on Saturday, the 23rd, against White Bluff. So if you're in town and looking for something to do, it's two good ways to spend your time. That's all, Mayor.
So I know, because I've heard for a minute now, I know that the traffic that is at Cumberland and Highway 100 is a little tenuous at times, and we're so excited that we are getting our new traffic lights, sidewalks, and turn lanes right there by all the schools. It's just going to make things move and run a lot more smoothly. I've had a lot of concern because of, you know, the community reaching out and just the time that it takes to get through that area. So I was at a transportation meeting on Wednesday, and I spoke with Jay Norris with TDOT. He's our representative. And what was happening right now, they're moving utilities, and they haven't gotten to the phase of actually doing, you know, the, the traffic light and the turn lanes and the sidewalks, which is, you know, going to be a while. It'd be over a year in progress, and it will be a little more invasive than what's going on right now. But what was happening is the people moving the utilities were starting before 9:00, and TDOT regulations, they can only work from 9:00 to 3:00. So when I talked to Mr. Norris, I asked him if he could reach out, because even though the scope of work moving the utilities, they've instructed them to be moved, it's not under their TDOT scope of work, but since TDOT is over all the highways, they have reached out and made sure that the people moving the utilities know that they cannot start before 9:00, which should put the children all in school. So all the students should be in school by 9:00, where they've been instructed to start after 9:00, so that should work out, you know, better that way, and then they have to stop by 3:00. I tried to see if we could move that to 2:00 so that it would not interfere with, you know, the children going home, but their hours are 9:00 to 3:00, and that's TDOT regulation. So I also spoke with Jason Golden. He's our superintendent of schools, and they're working with their traffic and mapping coordinators to review the traffic patterns right now, and they know that as time goes by with this project, it may get a little worse than it is now, just because of the nature of the project and what's going to, it's going to encompass. So they're looking at the traffic patterns and come up with a alternate or solution that will work better while this construction of our new traffic light, sidewalks, and turn lanes are being put in. That I, I put like a small, you know, just sketch out. It's not anything computer-generated, but you know, if somebody uses GPS, it kind of takes you back to Cumberland, and you may not know the route around if you're new to our community. So the sketch is, you know, not, I know that not everybody's on social media, but maybe people can share if people need it that aren't. But it does take you down King Road, which is to the right of the high school, to Forest Glen, to Cumberland, to Chester, and it comes out at the light right here at McDonald's and Shell. So that will take you around the whole area where the construction's going on. So after the mapping and, you know, mapping people with the county, which Jason Golden has gotten involved, after they review this, hopefully they can come up with a solution for the buses and, and the parents moving forward so that they can handle traffic a little bit better. So anyway, there are people working on it. They're working on it so that we can have a better solution for our community since this is going to be a long, long-term project, but once it's done, it's, it's going to be amazing. We've been wanting this traffic light to help out in that area for a long time. So if you have any questions, please reach out to me. I think I've given all the information that I got from both of those gentlemen, but I'm more than happy to speak with anybody about this. I'm so excited about, I mentioned this earlier, but about our Bowie Nature Park and what they're doing out there with the children and the camps and all the different activities. Just, you know, as Bree said, look back at her slides and you can reach out to her or, you know, just to be able to get information on all the different activities that everyone can be involved in. That's real exciting. Thank you to the board and to our staff for all the hard work you do. And just remember our community, just remember that we have the TPUDC, August 13th at 6:00 PM Wednesday night, coming to talk to us about our zoning ordinance, and the community is welcome. And then our strategic planning work session, August 16th, which is a Saturday from 8:00 to 2:15. That is a time, both of those are a time when you can get involved in what's going on with zoning and our community and just, you know, give you a better idea of how things are decided on and how they work. I think that's... Oh, as we've gone digital with, if, if people need a printout of the agendas, I'm sure that that can be accommodated, but as we've gone digital, just remember that we have an ordinance that states that, since we're provided iPads and cell phones, our ordinance states that while you're in city meetings, that only city-issued devices can be used. No other devices can be used during city meetings except city-issued devices. I'm not saying that people can't have their cellphone in case of an emergency or something, but during the meeting, only city-issued devices are to be used. And with that, just let's keep Fairview beautiful, and I appreciate everyone who is watching at home and came to join us today to give their input. We want to hear from you. So keep Fairview beautiful, and let's pick up and not throw out trash. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you.